Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is a special call meeting Glen County Board of Commissioners work session today, Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. We're going to have the invocation and the pledge. I'll ask Commissioner Neal to do the invocation and Commissioner Costin to lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
Join with me in prayer, please. Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for your love. We thank you for this beautiful community in which we live. And we just thank you, Father, for the opportunity to serve. We thank you for the people that work in the Glen County system. We thank you for our first responders. We just thank you for the privilege, Father, of being here today and living in this great country. Guide us and direct our path that we might bring honor and glory to your name all the week to. Amen.
We face the flag hand on your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for joining us today. On our agenda, we were first was to receive an update from the Golden Isles Development Authority, but Ryan Moore has been was traveling back and detained and can't make it here. And so we'll get a report from him at a future meeting. So we'll go to item number two, which is receive a report on the FY21 year-end audit results and a copy of the comprehensive annual financial report provided by for FY21 provided by Ms. Muntz.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right. So I emailed you guys the CAFER in a digital format. I do have printed ones for you upstairs, so I'll go get them before this meeting is over and bring it down for you. So we had a unmodified clean opinion on our audit. We had one finding, which was over our financial statements. This is due to a new regulation that GASB has put in place that's going to require elected officials to account for their funds in the same method that the finance department does through a general ledger and a software system. They have not been required to do that in the past. So we had a few that have done that of their own choosing, but the vast majority of our elected officials have not used that process. So this is something that we are working with IT now and some of my staff. We're going to start working with the elected officials in their offices to get this up and running and see what we can do to make this happen and hopefully clean this up before next year. This is a finding that's happening all over America. This is not, you know, just Glen County. This has been a big issue and a big problem because elected official offices are very short on the amount of staff that they have. And so most of them don't have an accountant or someone that knows how to do general ledger accounting in their office. So this is, you know, not just, not just for Glen County. This is nationwide and we will work with them and help them to get it in place as best as we can. It's possible we may have this finding again next year. Just depends on how long it takes us to get everything up and running. But that was the only finding that we had in our audit this year.
Again, issues when you're working with the elected officials and their offices about being able to implement this. Is there anybody you're working well with?
I don't think anyone even really understands the magnitude of it yet. The clerk of state court, Ms. Brenda Boone Coates, she has hers in a general ledger system and she operates that. She has a separate software outside of the court system. So she has hers ready to go. And if we can use hers as a guide on how to set up the others, I think that that will, that will be. And she has welcomed me to sit down with her and talk to her on how they have all of their financial setup. But it's just going to be a challenge. There's a lot of offices, a lot of elected officials and a lot of transactions that we're going to have to capture. So.
Tamara, is Odyssey the vehicle that we're going to be able to use in?
So Odyssey, okay. So Odyssey is a case management software. It is geared and built for the court system to handle the cases. There is a financial component to it, but, and I'm speaking from eight years ago when I used to audit Odyssey. The two didn't mesh well. We could never, in all of, I would audit in Chatham County, different, different places, and they used Odyssey. But the case management system and the financial side did not mesh well. So when you say someone goes to court and they have to put down, you know, a thousand dollars for a pending case, it's supposed to go into a liability account. So they would put it on the S, on the, on the case management side, but it didn't always feed over into the proper GL account side. So I don't know. I've been told that it's gotten better, but I haven't looked at it. IT is working with Tammy in my office now, and they are trying to go through and see what kind of reports Odyssey can give us. And we're hoping that we can just use the software that's already there. But right now Odyssey is basically set up as a bank reconciliation software. So that's what they're using it for is just doing a bank account recons, but not a general ledger system.
I thought when we brought that thing on, it was going to be the end-all for all things and just be the topium.
Well, I think that, you know, I think it is a great case management system, and I hope that the financial side will work. I've had a couple people from Tyler that have reached out to me already concerned that I'm concerned about it. So we'll see how, we'll see how it goes and if we can get it up and, up and running and connected and working correctly.
So they couldn't, we couldn't charge them to put somebody in the finance department to do their books for them?
So that, I mean, it's kind of a sticky wicket because an elected official doesn't have to do that. If it comes down to it, that would be what I would ask for is an extra accountant that would meet with them every month and get the data and import it. But that's really a duplication of effort. If we can get the system that they're already using to work properly, there's no need for us to have to re-enter it and finance a second time. So we're hoping that we can use Odyssey, make it work and get it to, get it to give us the information that we need so that we don't have to duplicate that effort. If that doesn't work, then yes, I will, in the budget, ask for another accountant and, and work with the elected officials and hope that we can all come to an agreement on, on getting that information in a timely manner and everything.
So how many slap on the hands do you think they can give us? We had 10 years of the clerk's office over there.
Well, when I, when I said to the auditor that I'm not, I said, I can't guarantee you this will be fixed before next year. I said, this is a ton of work and a lot, a lot to set up. And he said, well, he said, I, I think that you're going to be in the same boat as every other county. So he said, I anticipate it's going to take two or three years for everybody to really get up and running and doing things the way they need to.
So it's not going to affect unmodified?
I don't, I don't anticipate that we would. So what happened this year? Because we had to present the information in the CAFER this year. We, we got the elected officials to send us all the detail and finance put it together. So we put together income statements for them, liability accounts, went through what they, who they owed to what, and made some kind of quasi-general ledgers. So the, the finding wasn't that we didn't have it because we put it together and we had it for the audit. The finding was that you couldn't print out a report out of their system to get the information that we need.
Are they under a mandate? Are we under a mandate?
Yes, it's part of the governmental accounting standards board. So every year they pass new standards that we have to comply with in order to receive a passing score on our audit, which that, that translates into grant funding and everything has, it all comes back to that audit. So yes, we have to do this. How, they didn't tell us how to do it or how to, how to make it work. And Georgia, I think, is, is even a little more interesting than maybe some other states because of the autonomy that the elected officials have here compared to some other states. So. But we are, we're going to work in finance to do everything we can, and I have a good relationship with all of the elected officials. I don't anticipate any real issues. I believe we'll be able to make it work. You know, it may take some extra staff. It may take some extra software, but eventually I think we're going to be able to make it work.
If anybody can, you can.
Thanks. All right. Any other questions on that? All right. So this is just a snapshot of our five largest funds that are, that are supported by taxes. The beginning FY21 fund balance and then our revenues, expenditures, transfers in and out, and our ending fund balance. So this is there really just for your reference as you're looking over the materials. I'm not going to read these line by line. In the general fund, we started out with 58 million and we ended with 43 million. We had 66 million in revenues and 51 million in expenditures. So as you know, when we do a budget, the revenue and expenditure budgets are equal. We had, we took in more revenue than we anticipated and we spent less because we had a whole lot of vacancies this year. And then we also had some things that we couldn't get supplies for and things like that. So our expenditures were down a little bit. We transferred out 30 million to the capital projects fund. So at the bottom here tells you the unassigned fund balance in the general fund is 12 million. And then we have our 30 million rainy day fund or committed fund balance. This is just a comparison of our budget to actuals for the general fund of revenues. So we had a revenue budget of 57 million and we collected 66. A lot of that was some of the federal funding that we, that we took in.
Could you back up one thing? Sorry. So our unfunded unassigned balance is now 12 million?
Yes, in the general fund.
Okay. And that's down from our original, I think you sent me the email when I asked. So I'm talking, we're talking about the same fund?
Yes.
Because we were in the 25?
Right, before we made the transfer to capital projects.
Okay.
Our police fund, we started out right at a million and we ended close to 4 million. We collected about a million extra in revenue and we were pretty, quite a bit under budget for expenditures. And again, this was due mostly to all of our vacancies. This is the fire fund. We started at 5.5 and ended at 7.1 million. Again, collected a little more revenue down in expenditures due to vacancies. In the EMS fund, we started out at 700,000 and ended at 1.2 and same scenario here. Capital projects fund, this is where we transferred that money to out of the general fund undesignated fund balance. So we started out at 2.6 million. We brought in 4.8 in revenues, spent 5.2, and then we transferred in 29 million. So if you look at the bottom here, this is a breakdown of the capital projects fund balance. We have 12.5 million that is already committed to different projects. This includes the 7 million for commissioners, the 3 million for the office park and CVS renovation, and any other projects that are currently already in place and budgeted for. So that leaves 19.4 million. And it says committed because we're not allowed to have anything called unassigned in anything except for the general fund. But it is committed to future, future capital projects, whatever you all decide that those are going to be. So this 19.4 million is basically what your general fund undesignated used to be. That's that number. It's just now in the capital projects fund saying that rather, rather than it just sitting in general fund, we intend to use those funds for capital projects. So that is everything I have on the audit for FY21. So I'll entertain any questions.
The ARPA money, is it included in this? Is it the entire amount or just the amount we?
So it's not in any of that. We actually had to record a liability. We have the cash on hand for the ARPA funds, but they required us to record a liability because we have not spent that money as of June 30th. So it really just washed out, is zeroed out. There was a cash balance and a liability balance that zeroed each other out.
And how much is that fund?
The ARPA fund? We've received a little over. We've received a little over $8 million so far, and we're expected to get another $8 million in May.
And that goes, or can go to the general fund balance?
Only if we're on the water, that we need it.
They have, they've made some changes to the final rule that came out last week. So I do believe we're going to be able to put some of that in our general fund. But I have not verified that yet, so I'm hesitant to say that right now.
Plus, we haven't received it yet.
Right, we should get the rest in May.
In the present moment, what are the funds allowed for? For the present, under the present policy?
It can be used to offset financial downturns due to COVID. Can be used for anything that you can tie to COVID. So vaccines, PPE, extra staff for EMS that had to work due to COVID. But you have to be able to tie all of that back to COVID. They also allowed for water and sewer and drainage projects to be used and broadband. So those were kind of the three capital project areas that they allowed you to spend the money in. So we have committed, out of the money that we've received already, we have committed around $7 million to drainage projects, and we have an intergovernmental agreement with Joint Water Sewer to give them $4 million. We've provided $2 million to them already, and the next $2 million they'll get in May when we get the other funding.
And under the use of those funds, that's allowed for projects that are already drawn up, ready? Is that, there was a qualification?
There was not, it did not say that, but you have to have the money expended by December of '26, and it has to be encumbered by December of '24. So when we were meeting with the department heads, we said, "Look, if you want to use this for drainage projects, make sure you have some projects that are ready to go, because we can't wait until, you know, two or three years down the road to start using this money. Otherwise, we'll have to turn it back in." So I asked them to focus on projects that were ready to go.
When you said we can use it for extra personnel to cover COVID, does that also include overtime pay?
Yeah, if we can tie it back to COVID.
But the new rule might be-
The new rule, I believe, is a little bit more lenient. So I believe that from the summaries that I've read, you can take $10 million off the top and use it in your general fund if you're a smaller county, which we are considered a smaller county. But don't hold me to that yet. I haven't read the whole thousand-page rules yet.
Well, nor digestively.
No.
So I guess as we go through the budgeting process, we should just put that aside and not count them one way or the other. Do we have a firm idea what's going on?
I'll have an answer for you before we start the budget process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then you have a second report for us, is that correct?
I do. So I'm going to give you a quick update on where we are for fiscal year '22. This is, yeah, so keep in mind, we're halfway through the year. So July through December of 2021 was the first two quarters of our fiscal year. So we should be about 50% through the year. As far as revenues and expenditures go, you can't always count on the 50% because we have seasonal fluctuations. We collect property tax early in the year, so we're well above that. But that's just a general rule of thumb. I believe in your packets, you have our actual financial statements with all the departments and the funds listed out. So I'm not going to go through all of those, but I'm going to just hit some of the highlights here. General fund revenues, we've collected around 90% through 1231 in property taxes. And this is percent of the budget, so 90% of the budget. We've collected 52% of the TABAT budget. Lost, we're about 1.5 million ahead of budget right now compared to what we had anticipated. So these are always a month behind. So we've only posted five months so far.
So you're about 1.5 million ahead of, through the first five months? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. If you look at the total general fund revenues, we've collected 62% of our budget. And then this is what I was just saying, that you can't always use the 50% threshold when you're looking at those statements. Then if we look at our expenditures in the general fund, we have spent 47% of our budget so far. And this includes the trial expenses, which I do have an update for y'all at the end here today. I have no major concerns with any departmental budgets at this time. Everybody is staying on track a lot because we have so many vacancies. We're about $1 million under budget in the general fund only due to vacancies. And keep in mind that the general fund does not house police or fire, which is where most of our vacancies are. So we have 86 vacancies as of last week, and about 58 of those are in public safety, and the rest are mostly in the general fund.
Can you back back up one again? Till we're, okay, business licenses. Do you have off the top of your head about what that number is?
We collect around $350,000 a year, I believe, in business licenses.
And you know, I had asked you about one possibility, you know, just pattern after the experience of my business. But it taught her maybe about looking at refund of business licenses from the previous year as a consideration for businesses that are struggling. Just something to keep in mind as we go through, if we have the cash balances to do that.
So if the board decides they want to do that, my recommendation would be we give a discount on the next year versus a refund for a couple of reasons. One, if a business has already filed their taxes, they would have claimed that payment. That could be problematic for them. And just the administrative nightmare of trying to refund all of those business licenses would be really challenging. So my recommendation, if the board decides to go that route, is that we give a discount on the, whatever payment is due in the FY23 budget.
And also, you know, we've got to remember that there were PPP funds out there that a lot of businesses had the opportunity to take advantage of. EIDL loans were out there for them, and self-employed myself. But, you know, there are those revenues, but there are also the people that work every day that paid a price during all this COVID. I don't know to-
Equitable.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it. I just don't know if that's a fair distribution of excess funds. Just my point.
Well, not starting a big discussion on it, but I, you know, I think that, for example, if the governor's taking an action possibly of a refund of personal taxes or cash refund, looking at different segments to say if we have a lot of excess funds, whether we put it back in capital improvements or anything, and we just ought to be able to look in different ways to give it back to our people.
All right.
Go ahead.
All right, so no major concerns with any departmental budgets right now, even including the trial costs. Our departments are in good shape.
Are you going to go back to the trial calls to me? Okay.
Yes. All right, so we were talking about vacancies, about 86 vacancies right now, about 58 of those in public safety.
But you're saying approximately a million under budget in the general fund. So the vacancies in the police and the-
That's separate.
That's in the separate one, okay.
Yeah.
86 vacancies and how much?
I believe the number was 58 in public safety.
Well, roughly 30 positions in the general funds, 28 to 30.
You know what departments are mostly in?
I can get you that information. I have a breakdown that I can get you after this. All right, so I'm looking at a few of our major funds. This is our Accommodation Excise Tax Fund. We've collected 67% of our revenue budget so far for the year. We're about $2 million ahead of our budget on Accommodation Excise Tax, and we are 51% ahead of what we were this time last year. We have spent-
Feel comfortable in those numbers? I mean, those are pretty big numbers.
Yeah, yeah. And I've gotten quite a bit of information for Scott, and we've talked through it. And it's very difficult to forecast what's going to happen because there's so many different anomalies that are in play here. You know, you have the new short-term rentals. You have COVID. You have the golden ray and all of the revenue that that brought in with the housing of the folks there. There's a lot of different things. You have a lot of international travel that's not happening. So people are coming here locally, probably more than they might otherwise. So it's very hard to forecast what's going to happen for the rest of the year and next year. But right now, as of right now, we are doing well, and we're $2 million ahead of budget where we would have been this time last year.
Is that on the county share?
Yes, that is the county share. And we've spent 39% of our expenditure budget. Again, a lot of the expenditures in this fund are seasonal because this pays for a lot of our beach operations and our parks and things like that. So this will have a heavier usage as we get into the summer. Our current fund balance in this fund is $221,000. We typically don't leave a significant fund balance in this fund at the end of the year. We have a few things in there for emergencies, and that's about it. Our police fund, we've collected 86% of our revenue budget. Of that, 92% of our property tax budget, and then our insurance premium tax make up the two biggest revenues there. We've spent 38% of our expenditure budget. We're $665,000 under budget in personnel cost. And this also does include the trials. So we're actually, if you take the trial expenses out, we're actually even more under budget than this. But they're included in this number. Our current fund balance in the police fund is $3.6 million. And our target fund balance, based on our new fund balance policy, is $4.1 million. So that's the amount we want to leave in that fund for events, emergencies, and things like that. So this is a new fund. It was just started in fiscal year '20. And so I think we've done well to build it up to the 3.6. A lot of it is due to the vacancies that we've had, and so that's not going to continue long term. But right now, the funds are there. Our fire fund, we've collected 87% of our revenue, 92% of our property tax budget. We've spent 44%. Their personnel costs are on budget. They have vacancies, but they have been completely offset by overtime. So they have budgeted overtime, which, so they're kind of just breaking even right now. Their current fund balance is $6.8 million, and the target fund balance for them is $2.5 million. So there's a little bit of funding here in the fire fund. If you all decided that you wanted to, you know, if we needed to purchase any new equipment or if we wanted to pay off any of the fire fund debt, there's some extra money there that we could do that with.
I think one of the things that we all got the notice of was the inability of the fire department to meet its call, inbound calls, response. And we didn't have the staff and the vehicles. That was for Glen County, and we had to negate our ability to respond to, like, Darian and whatever other communities we have. So we-
So I think a big part of that is due to staffing. So we're so short-staffed right now that, you know, they might, they- and I think also that was in EMS, if I remember correctly. I don't think it was necessarily fire. I think it was EMS.
It was taking an hour and a half to unload somebody at the hospital.
Yes.
Staffing at the hospital as well as EMS. Something Kristi Jordan about it. She just said, "We got-" Commissioner Wayne there for pushing through the discussion of pay compression because we definitely got to get people back on the payroll and meeting, especially that fire, safety, and police. Thank you for that.
And I think our discussion is expanding into pay, not pay compression, but-
Market rates.
Yeah, looking at the entire workforce. Just resetting our pay structure.
All right, so this is our EMS fund. We've collected 77% of our budgeted revenue so far. Of that, 91% property taxes, and 65% of our ambulance fee budget has been collected. We've spent 46%. Again, they have broken even on their personnel costs with their vacancies offset by overtime. Their current fund balance is $950,000, and the target for this fund is $1.35 million. So we're getting close there.
Could you explain, when you say revenues collected 77%, and ambulance fees 65%, and property taxes 91%, that's a lot of different percent.
So it's up the budget. So 77% of our total revenue budget has been collected. And I picked out the two largest revenues in that budget to provide as examples. So our ambulance fees and our property taxes are the two largest. But you would have to take all the revenues from that entire fund and use those to come up with the 77%. All right, building inspection fund. We've collected 57% of our budget. We have spent 44% of our budget. Our current fund balance is $464,000, and our target fund balance is $250,000. So we have a little bit of extra funding there if we need any capital upgrades or software upgrades. All right, and the last one, solid waste fund. We've collected 77% of our budget. We've spent 34%, and our current fund balance is $1.2 million. We don't have a target fund balance for this fund. It's not a governmental fund. It's a proprietary fund. It's supposed to run like a business, so you want to pretty much try to break even. Last year, I had talked to you guys about we were going to have to do something about solid waste. We were spending down that fund balance. Well, we did that when we did away with the recycling. So that has fixed that issue, and we're good now on the solid waste fund. All right, here is a snapshot of what we spent for the trial. Up here, we have at the top our overtime. We had $388,000 total, and it's broken down by department there. And then other expenditures, this was mutual aid, technology improvements, cameras, things like that that we put in. So our total there was the $697,000 for a total of little over $1 million for the trial. So it-
A lot less than we were talking about.
Came out a lot better than we anticipated. So it was, you know, a lot of hard work, and I think everyone did a great job in trying to keep the cost down, but keep everybody safe, so.
Discount the power of prayer. A lot of that going on too.
And I'd like to, again, not pass up an opportunity to say to the Aubrey family, their message to the community was one of peace. I think that added a great deal to our final outcome, to our unified demand and the work that they did in the preface of it, and certainly to the sheriff's office. For the way he handled the courthouse and the work that they put into it, it was a great combined effort that spoke a message of peace for Glen County. And I think that's why we see this.
Just to reiterate what I've said to you personally, is that your leadership as chairman during that time and standing in the gap of working with all the different agencies and personalities and just being just a convoy. So we certainly appreciate that.
I feel like I had a very small part of it, but thank you for the compor-
We all agree with that.
Kamara, what about the federal part of the trial? Tamara, what about the federal part of the trial? Are we going to have these obligations and that support security too? Potentially, or what's been the discussion?
So from what I've... I have not been in any of those meetings, but just from the feedback that I've received, the federal government is going to cover to the courthouse steps, and anything outside of that will be the city or the county's responsibility. The city has asked us for some assistance, so we have started helping them with some Jersey barriers and things like that. So... But we anticipate minimal costs on the county, and we are working on an intergovernmental agreement with the city to... If there's any significant cost, that we would be reimbursed. So the county will be responsible for our normal areas, and then we'll help the city with any additional staff or support that they request of us.
All right. Any other commissioners, any other questions? Ms. Munson?
Thanks.
Thank you for the good report and the detailed report. Thank you very much. Next, item number four. Ms. Thompson, Director of Community Development, Proposal Ordinance Amendment to Follow to Allow Elevated HVAC Units in Building Setbacks.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. And thank you, Chairman, for letting me add this to the agenda. As most of y'all recall, in October of 2021, we had a work session with TSW, who is working on our overall complete revision and rewrite of our zoning and subdivision ordinance. And as we're working on that with the goal of completing that in the fall of this year, Commissioner Fendig had come forward with some ordinance amendments. He wanted to go through the system separately, and those are doing that right now. And in October, this work session, I miscommunicated with Chairman Neal at the time. We had a variance coming through the process where a homeowner had placed their HVAC system, you know, their air conditioning unit, inside the setbacks elevated. And that is currently against our code. Our code currently reads that your HVAC unit can be in the setbacks as long as it's at grade. So as long as it's at grade, it's okay. As soon as it's elevated, it needs a variance. And you all approved a variance in November and had done a number of times. And Chairman Neal and Commissioner Rofolsky in October asked me to go ahead and move this forward as an ordinance change. And I will tell you, I heard that to mean with the TSW big package and not separately the way Commissioner Fendig's were. So Chairman... He's now Commissioner Neal, and I talked about it. I misunderstood that, so I wanted to just bring it back to y'all and get direction from y'all on if you want me to go ahead and move this through. It would go to both planning commissions and then come back to y'all in the beginning of March for a vote. And this is what would change. That's found in our definitions. And so the definition of a yard talks about what can be allowed in the yard versus the principal sky. So, for example, we don't talk about trees, walkways, patios, driveways, fences. None of that's considered a structure for purposes of the setback. And the highlighted part is heating air conditioning units on grade. So what we would just change is we would strike out the words "on grade", and that would be that amendment. And that would then allow elevated AC units in setbacks. That would, right now, be Glen County-wide. That's how this definition applies. A lot of times, the variances that are requested are for homes that are in the flood zone. And because of flood zone compliance, they have to elevate their equipment. And so our Board of Appeals has routinely been seeing these variances throughout the year. So my request today is that you all let me know if it's okay to go ahead and put this proposed change. Commissioner Neal and Rofolsky had brought up last October and put that through. The planning commissions get their feedback, and then bring that to y'all in March.
Any questions, gentlemen, for Ms. Thompson?
Did this change it sometime? Because extraordinary amount of homes on St. Simons are on rup and rup, you know, for that reason. They are elevated. So was there a time change or a philosophy change or a female requirement or something?
So it may have changed before the early '90s when we had our CRS Community Rating System program, which is what part of this is related to. But we actually, the five years I've been here, we do dozens of these variances a year. We have entire neighborhoods. Every home in that neighborhood has paid and come to the Board of Appeals for variance that they're the same flood elevation as all their neighbors, and they've got to elevate their HVAC unit. I think Commissioner Rofolsky can probably speak to that from his time on the Board of Appeals, but it's just one of those that...
All over East Michigan.
That, you know, it's keeping the home safe. It's keeping it from property damage. So we've always recommended approval of those variances.
Must have been a time and a season where...
There very well could have been. We didn't...
You had to put them up.
You had to put them up.
You had to put them up because of the...
The flood zones.
Flood zones. And that's the way you'd get it paid for, then we wouldn't get a CO if they weren't above the flood line.
Yes, sir.
And that's where they get up to win the height bill.
And so what we've been doing is saying, to meet your flood zone requirement, you have to elevate X amount. To elevate X amount, you've got to go to the Board of Appeals and get permission to elevate your HVAC. So right now, we require you to do one thing, and we require you to get a variance to accomplish that thing.
It's only applicable to the setback.
Correct.
As long as it's not in the setback, you can put it on the telephone pole.
It's an honoris ordinance. It makes no sense. It's never made any sense. And, you know, if it was put there to keep from impeding fire protection or whatever, the air conditioner does that. So whether or not it's elevated a couple of feet or not elevated a couple of feet, it's not a permanent structure, and it's not attached to the building. So it's never made any sense.
Yeah, I didn't... I'm not developing, but I didn't realize that the ordinance was this way.
Well...
Because, you know, like I said, all over St. Simons, I know that they're elevated up.
I would say most of them are probably not in the setback.
Is there, Commissioners, any concern with her going through the planning commissions, bringing it back?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. We're going to receive a SPOS 2022 process update. Who is handling that?
I think it's a team effort.
Oh, right, a team effort.
And I'll be doing the first two or three slides, and then I'll turn it over to Erin and Tamara.
Okay, great.
So I just wanted to give you all some background on SPOS. I know you are all familiar, but just to familiarize everybody with the SPOS, that is the Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax. Can someone move it to the next slide, please? It's an op... Okay, back one. Thank you. It's a 1% county sales tax used to fund capital outlay projects. It is imposed when the Board of Commissioners calls a local referendum that's passed by the voters, and it's the county and participating municipal governments. Thank you, Rhonda. And these are the five steps that are required by the state ordinance to... By the state code to adopt SPOS. And those are just the steps that come in. And then Erin will explain the timing of those to make sure we meet all requirements to be able to call the referendum.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Y'all talk about the timeline. I think in decent form on your retreat on Tuesday, but staff did want to give y'all just kind of formal timeline to go over, and you can have this, and you're in your backup. And we have six key steps in this. And we have a no later than, which is your drop dead date. This does not leave you any room whatsoever in your right-hand column as to the very last day in terms of how that happens. But the... Now, I'll just go down the steps. But step one is where we're at right now. Notice has not been sent out, but to get the process started by state law. And you do have an X by the steps that are required and mandated by state law, and you have to follow. But step one is to send written notes to the city that you'd like to meet with them. And that's, you know, hit by letter, hand-delivered, emailed, and that has to go out 10 days prior to actually meeting. We said July 1st is your drop dead date. But of course, we recommend that if you are to go forward for November 8th referendum, that you do that as soon as possible. So we have recommended that you send that letter out sometime in January, if you want to meet in February, or February if you want to meet in March. But we do suggest that you try to meet with them sometime in February. You can start this process earlier enough. The, you know, springtime, May and June will be here before we know it, especially as y'all are trying to have additional meetings with staff in the city to try to figure out your project list, budget estimates, et cetera. Step two, once you send out your... You know, I'm trying to read through this. You know, I can see it is actually meet with them. That's kind of your kickoff meeting. Meeting, talk about how long you want your SPOS to be. Do you want to be a five-year? Do you want an IGA? The IGA, as we talked about last week, does give you the ability to go up to six years. One thing that was not brought up is that if you have a Level 1 countywide project such as a courthouse, there is a mandate, as long as it costs below 24 months of collections, that it has to be at least five years. But an IGA, American Civil Agreement, does allow you to go up to six years if you want to, so.
Say that again, Erin, about the five years.
So as long as if there's a Level 1 countywide project. In this case, you are talking about a Level 1 countywide project, which is your courthouse. And that is mandated, that'd be at least five years. So in the years past, we talked about, you know, three and a half, which is what SPOS 2016 was. There was no Level 1 project. So it was the earlier of those events. And if you have an IGA, then it's the... It's time certain. So your collection period will be the length of time stated in an IGA. So if you say five years, it's going to be five years, even if you collect the full budget amount before then. It's going to be five years collections, unlike what we did before. So there's a little confusion as to the earlier of the two. In this context, with an IGA, it would be the later... Well, it would be the time certain. If you collect, you know, more money than you estimated, that's okay. That can go towards the projects that are remaining on there. Or if all projects are completed and you close out that SPOS, like y'all have in the past, that additional money goes back into general fund with the intent of reducing taxes.
That six-year, Erin, is a required... I know it's kind of on the county. We've been splitting money with the Water, Sewer, and Jekyll. But that six-year is a mandated that we just split it with the city. We know we have to split with the city.
Correct.
But I guess my concern is the county keeping, at least in that six-year, you know, most of, if not all of that money is possible.
Correct. So the Water, Sewer, and Jekyll, because they're not a city or a county, this is a county SPOS that you share with cities, qualifying cities. So while you can distribute money and disperse money to Jekyll and Water, Sewer, like y'all having to pass it, there's no legal mandate that you do that. And the six-year is just another year of distributions. So you can just build out your project list, so you have a, you know, a dollar amount that's commensurate with what you think you can collect. That split with the city is going to be either default population-based split or through the IGA, you can negotiate a difference on that. But you're... You know, one of the processes you'll have here is, and I'm sure you'll get... If it's like years past, you'll have Water, Sewer provide you with, you know, a request. Request them out with the projects, sending with Jekyll. And you'll just build that into the county's list. And of course, the city can participate in that as well. But that's another part that you'll have to just discuss with the city. In 2016, SPOS 2016, either county contributed towards Water, Sewer, but I don't believe there's any city Water, Sewer projects on there. Of course, that's something that you can continue to talk about with the city. You know, of course, the split with the city in 2016 was 19.32%. That's gone down a little bit, down to 18% based on just the last census. So we'll go by the last census that was just released, which had it lowered from 19.32% down to 18%. Did I answer the question? Did I, in terms of Water, Sewer?
Yeah, well, basically, you're saying we still... It's still up to us in that six-year if we want to share that.
Correct.
I guess my concern is just that we are sharing the five years. So we may want to look at either doing a reduction in that or not sharing.
With Jekyll and Water, Sewer, it's typically a dollar amount. You don't give them a percent of the collections. I mean, there is a percent of it, but they'll ask you, I think, for Jekyll Island or the authority. Based on memory, I think it was $2 million, for instance, that they asked for under SPOS 2016. And so once you reach... And we would just give them a pro-rata portion of every dollar until they reached that $2 million. And at that point, that was it. Same thing with Water, Sewer. So, you know, if there are six-year, for instance, under SPOS 2022, whatever that dollar amount is that you've allotted for projects for those two entities, when you hit that dollar amount, then that's it. Six-year just means that they're essentially, you know, let's say they get two cents of every dollar comes in. You'll continue to give them that two cents until they reach their $2 million or Water, Sewer $10 million or whatever that ends up being. They get their portion of the dollar same time we do. Now, it is... We're saying again that a Level 1 countywide project such as a courthouse, that money comes off the top before there's any split with anyone else, including the city. So if it's $25 million, that $25 million is collected first off the top, and then what remains after that is what's split with the city. That first 25 is... There is no split. 100% comes to the county to fund that project. As y'all talked about on your retreat, there are some benefits to an IGA, I think, namely, again, the six-year. It also allows you to create kind of a project list where projects are the very end. If you say to the public in advance, these are projects at tiers, if you will. If they're not funded, then you don't have to complete them. That's an additional benefit that we talked about last week.
Should we go about that? Well, and the other thing you were saying is it also allows us a set time where in the past, it's been either a dollar amount or a time, either or. Where in this case, if we have an IGA in place of the city, we can say 60 months. And whatever's collected during that 60 months would go to those list of projects. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct, absolutely. And because of, you know, and this is all dependent on how you structure it, but because it was a SPOS, there was no Level 1 countywide project, there was no IGA, it was the earlier of those two events. If you collected, I think it was 16, was it? No, it was...
Seven.
Seventy-seven million dollars over three and a half years. So once you hit that three and a half year mark, if you hadn't collected the, you know... Or if you've collected the $70 million at turn of year three, it stopped right then.
But the state...
Right, right. Because that. But it's the earlier of the two events. If you have an IGA, it'll be time certain. So, you know, if it's five years, it's five years. It cuts off at five years. Even if you collected your full estimated budget or estimated amount in year four and a half, it's still going to be five years. And the same thing with the six-year. You just expand it out another year. And, you know, but...
And just to make sure that we're all on the same page. The flip side of that, if we have a downturn and collections come in significantly lower because we have an IGA, because we have the priority of projects, and instead of maybe $100 million coming in, only $90 million comes in, where you can, as we go down the list, and when we get through the $90 million, that stops. through the 90 million, that stops. We're not obligated to the extra $10 million worth of projects. Where in the past, when we haven't done it like this, we've named the projects, and then we're responsible for the projects, even if we come up short on revenue. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. And I think a good example of that is SPOS 5, that was the 2005 SPOS, where, you know, we had the recession that hit us in '07, '08. Great example. I think we budgeted from $120 million. It was a five-years SPOS, if I recall correctly, and we ended up collecting below $100 million. So we were 20-something million dollars short because we didn't have an IGA that said otherwise. The county and the city were still obligated to finish the projects. Now, you can scale those projects down to be commensurate with how much money you're, you know, you still have to complete the project, scale it down, or it comes out of the general fund. And I think that's, that's a big difference between having an IGA that spells it out. It's all in the details. Because the IGA is going to tell the voters, it's going to tell the voters that here is what you're voting on. And because you're telling them in advance what you're voting on, and you have tiers and kind of projects at the end of those tiers, that says, if it's not funded, if there's a downturn, that's what makes that okay under Georgia SPOS law. Any questions?
Yeah. I'm sure you do it without an IGA.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, there is a benefit for it. It does require, you know, I think, additional step in the process. So when you, in step two here, when you meet with the city, you know, if that's in February or whenever that may be, one of the questions that comes up, one of the things to talk about in addition to length of time, you want a five-year, or it's going to be a five-year, potentially six, is to whether you want to have an IGA. One of the things that, as part of that is, if the default, if you don't have an IGA is population split, which again is at 18, is there, is there a different split with the city that you'd like to negotiate? Because that's also something that is, is a pivot point in that, in that IGA. Because you have to talk about it, you have to agree to it, they agree to the IGA, and y'all agree to it. If it falls through, you're going back to not having an IGA. So I think in 2016, we started off drawing up an IGA. In fact, we drew up an IGA, but it was never ratified by the board. So we worked with each other on that. It just didn't happen for one reason or another. You know, the board's just in improvement, but we did draw one up. So they can't fall through. They can't fall through if you can't, you know, see eye to eye on every single one of those points, but, you know, they're pretty, from our end, fairly easy to draft up and get going. So that's one of the things that, you know, when you meet with them, and of course, you can have more than one meeting. That first kickoff meeting is just your first meeting to say, kicking it off, work towards this, work on your project list, here's the budget estimates that we have, and preliminary numbers-wise, if it is split or split this way, have each party receiving X amount of allocation from that, from that, from that dollar. And it gives the city an idea, gives y'all an idea of what you're working with. So they'll go back, start filling the project list on that. Again, taking off the top, if $25 million is your, your just general estimate right now, you're going to, and let's say hypothetically, it's a $100 million SPOS. Now, you're talking about a split of $75 million, because that just comes off the top between the parties. But, you know, there's a lot to talk about, almost too much to talk about in that first meeting, but you start getting a game plan together as far as where to go from there. Again, the recommended time frame for that would be February to move that forward. Then step three, that's when everything comes together. That's the, that's what we call, what we call the SPOS resolution, which includes your city and county project list. That includes the budgeted amounts, and there's an Exhibit A that includes all of that. That'll, that'll be the final step in the process. Kind of probably should have included, you know, IGA somewhere in there, but the IGA can be adopted at any point prior to...
August 8.
Prior to, well, that's your deadline. August 8 is your deadline. If you, if you wait another day longer than that, then SPOS will not be able to, you know, really go forward on that. But we recommend that the board approve your final SPOS resolution in June or July. So we just pointed, we pointed out the no later than, just so you have an idea of the statutory deadlines versus what will give staff some breathing room. You know, there's a, you know, we have to get publications done. The Board of Elections, I'm turning my head a little bit, Board Elections has to meet, a meeting, the Board of Elections meet, call the election, and then publish it in the paper. And that takes day two or three to do that. But your, you know, your ultimate goal is as a board, when you've done what you've done, what you need to do, and then you just turn it over to Board of Elections is step three. You know, to give, again, some breathing room, you know, my preference would be to have that process done, wrapped up, and put a bow on it by June or July of this year. Any questions up to that point? And then, you know, between steps two and three, if it is the wish of the board, the two boards will be developing the IGA. That, that happens simultaneously with development of the resolution. And you could even, you know, really combine those into one step and just have the IGA approved right before your SPOS resolution is step three. Step four is that as soon as you, you complete your, your resolution, adopt that, and the city does not have to adopt the resolution. That's a county resolution that the county adopts with the preceding project list. You forward over them, and then it's now in their hands to issue the call. That's the actual date, the date they publish it is the day of the call. No later than August 10 is the absolute deadline. Of course, we're going to recommend to them that they get it done, you know, days or weeks in advance as soon as you turn that over to them. We don't want to be, you know, we don't want to be on the last day and then have to be concerned if something, a glitch happens with the transmission of the, of the notice. And then five is, they have to publish it four weeks, consecutive weeks preceding the election. That's part of elections thing matter. Of course, we'll work with them closely to make sure they do that, and they have done a good job in the past. Then step six is when you actually hold your referendum. That's, that's it.
Alan, you got all that to explain to these people tonight?
Uh, no. I'll leave that up to you.
The weight of the world on the shoulders of the Senate.
Aaron, in case people are listening in or reviewing what's kind of said, but will you explain what IGA means?
Certainly. It's, it's an intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city that really spells out, you know, any specific, you know, and the law allows this, any deviations from your default standard SPOS, you'll negotiate the split. If you want to have tiers, where you say, you know, items or projects in tier, you know, two, you know, this will be funded and completed first, you can do that. Projects at the end of the, the list, if unfunded, because you have a downturn, don't have to be funded.
Why would you do an IGA and not have it tiered? I mean, it seems like that's the main purpose of an IGA, is to cover yourself if you've got a shortfall.
Right. You do tiers, you know, one of the, and I think SPOS 4 was with an IGA, that's the last time we had IGA, was SPOS 4, 2001, I believe it was. Make sure there's not five. The one thing I heard as a potential drawback, if you have tiers and you say, we're going to fund and complete this project first, is that just by experience, future boards may say, well, can we start something in tier two or three first? And well, the answer was, based on how that was drafted, you were, you were stuck drafting, or I'm sorry, completing tier one projects first. So you couldn't, or you couldn't leapfrog into, you know, from a tier three over to one, despite what, you know, had maybe a change in circumstances. So that might be a drawback. Now, we might be able to, you know, learning, you know, kind of understand how that may have been a drawback, you know, look at how to fix that. But that, that would be, that was an example where, you know, I think, because, you know, six years, you know, you have a different board, board members come on, they may be asking those questions. And we were asked those questions by successor boards to the 2001 board that said, can we, can we move this project up in priority? But once you put that to the vote, I mean, once you have that approved and signed, and the referendum's held, you can't change that priority after the fact.
So we need to watch how we, the language we put into the IGA.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But in, in your discussion, Aaron, we've talked about level one, but typically, our conversation's been a tier one was the courthouse. But in this conversation, tiers are the priority of projects. So for clarification, you, you refer to a level one as being a courthouse project. And then our projects under an IGA would be in tiers.
Correct. Great question, Commissioner. And sometimes, though, you know, tiers and levels are conflated sometimes. SPOS law calls courthouse or detention centers, and there's a, there's a finite list, they call them level one projects, not tier projects. And that's where, you know, that distinction is. And you have a level two countywide projects, but you have a level one, level two countywide projects, and that just means those are the projects you can take money off the top to, to fund. The, you know, SPOS law in that context doesn't use the word tiers. So, well, sometimes they're used interchangeably, level one countywide or level two countywide is the proper terminology for courthouse or something in that, in that genre. And when you're talking about tiers, that's when your IGA comes in. That, that after you get beyond your, your level one countywides, if you want to set up, you know, kind of a tier schedule where, you know, everything in tier one's been completed first, tier two after that, and then tier three may be what you have when everything's, you know, funded and done, and then you allocate money towards that. You might only have two tiers, you know, the ones you, you know, you're going to do, or you might just have a list of projects that here's the order you're going to get them done in. But again, you have to try to, you have to stick to that, that, those tiers as best you can, because that's what you told the voters, here's the order we're going to do it, and things at the end of the list are...
It would make more sense to group projects into tiers.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, you know, the order within the tier wouldn't matter.
Yeah. And that's, you know, I think that gives you that flexibility, just with the caveat that if they're, you know, just what you set in motion with through that IGA in 2022 is going to, you know, address and affect, you know, you can, how you're going to, you know, you can't move those projects that are in later tiers now to, you know, that's your only caveat, I think, to have. And the only thing I think we encountered is staff and as a board trying to work on the SPOS where they're working. So there's, you know, I think there are some, you know, if you do it right and everyone knows, you know, it can, it can be done successfully, but just make sure this is the, you know, the priority that everyone's comfortable with, because you can't change that after the fact.
Well, that rigidity pales in comparison to having to write a $25 million check because you haven't gotten enough money to fund the project that you told the voters you were going to fund.
Yeah, true.
Particularly in an inflationary environment, which we seem to find ourselves in.
Yeah. And that's, again, that was what we had or experienced in SPOS 5, that less money, same number of projects. I think, and it ebbs and flows. SPOS 4, there was an IGA, and, you know, kind of from there, like, well, just don't do an IGA anymore because it has some rigidity to it. But, you know, like everything else, I think, you know, that pendulum starts to swing, you try to find that, that Goldilocks zone of, you know, what's right in the middle and that. So it was really, do y'all, you know, do those, those benefits outweigh, you know, any, any kind of rigidity, if you will, to having an IGA? But, you know, that's the stuff you might want to talk to, or you will want to talk to the city about when you meet. And then, you know, oftentimes, there's another meeting or two or three beyond that to develop that list, but really, I think...
I, I think certainly we need to get a consensus heads to how soon or if we're going to contact the city. I'm going to think so.
Yeah, I think if, from the commission here, I've talked to some of you privately, some of you I haven't been able to speak to. Is there any concern about going ahead and making that contact with the city in order to set up that first meeting, probably the first part of February? Is there any concern about doing that? Is there consensus here that that's okay? Or I don't see any reason we want to wait any longer. Okay. So if it's all right, I think staff would direct you, directing you guys to go ahead and make contact with the city to establish that first joint meeting, also to begin laying the groundwork for that meeting so that we don't come in completely cold.
I'm a little new, so how would that, how would that be, would that be a work session meeting or a formal meeting?
It'd be a formal joint call meeting with the city and the county with a specific topic of talking about SPOS 22. I've sat in on one of those. So it can be, you know, a lot of people like to give their opinions, rightly so, so. But it'll either be an afternoon or early evening, so it'll probably be an afternoon meeting.
And would we have mediation at that meeting or...?
No, I think it's really just establishing, we're going to start working together as the city and county to try to come up with a SPOS for 2022 and kind of lay some groundwork of what that looks like. I think there may be some discussion about the different types of SPOS, whether we want an IGA or we want to do it like we've done typically in the past. I think Aaron's kind of alluding, it may be the first of a couple meetings that we may have over the next several weeks, just as we begin to prepare and look at it, and it'd probably be wise to come back and meet with them again and say, okay, this is where we are, you guys still on course with it. So I think communication's key. But that answer your question clear?
And in the past, you know, I know COVID has changed the, you know, rules on us, but, you know, you've met, you know, in this room, to have that joint meeting. So it's, it's kind of a less formal, it's a, it's a joint meeting, you call it just like any other open meeting, but just informal, you just want to kind of just introduce that first one, provide to the concepts, the ideas, expectations, timelines, you know, obviously people need the city's list to us to build our list, to build the resolution. But, you know, they're, they're informal meetings, kind of like this, you know, work session type meetings, but they are official meetings. Commissioner, so if, if, you know, staff is being asked to move forward with that, one of the things we, we have done in the past, we would recommend, again, is to just, you know, for the record, have it on there, and we can have this to y'all, you know, by, on Thursday, just have the board, you know, and this gives everybody direction on it, just, you know, authorize, vote to authorize the chair to send that letter, which is step one, to the city. We may not have a, you know, a date yet, but that just authorizes the chair to do that. It kicks it off, it marks November 8th as your, as your, you know, your date that you're, you're moving towards, and that's, you know, that's going to be part of the record. So we can have that to y'all on Thursday as a, an item to add to the agenda if that is okay with you.
Good. All right. Sounds good.
So only other thing to point out, make sure that, I know we know it, but the general public knows that the 80 million allocated percentage-wise to the county, it's like the bottom line there is that intergovernmental agreement does not, that, any funds to the Joint Water Sewer and Jekyll comes out of that 82% of the county.
Unless the city, the city can certainly opt to, and historically, they haven't, they haven't contributed towards Jekyll, but they could opt to give part, they're 18% to Water and Sewer if they can fetch those shows.
Okay. Great job. Next, we have, yes, ma'am, you have a question?
You can ask me to add this, it's in...
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, I forgot what I was doing.
So we did a comparison of like-size local counties in Georgia and what their millage rates are. And just for the record, all of these counties, which all have higher millage rates than, than Glenn, they also all have a SPOS. So Commissioner O'Quinn asked me to look that up, so they do all have a SPOS, and that shows you our millage rates compared to those other counties. So just wanted to add that there and...
And our current millage rate is what, 9.9? Is that correct? As you can see, as commissioners, they can see the, it goes, we're at the low, at the lowest of these comparable counties all the way up to Daughtry with...
Dalton.
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 All of it here.
All of it. Peckham, Captain.
Up to 25 hills. So as we're talking with the public and discussions about why SPOS, I'm sorry, took your knee out. You know, SPOS helps us fund capital outlay projects that we wouldn't normally be able to cover in a timely fashion with our budget. And it goes hand in hand for property, those that are paying their property taxes. It helps keep those, in my opinion, and I think what you'll see, helps keep our millage down and on what people are paying on their property taxes. So I wanted to bring that to you guys as you go out and talk to the public, just reminding folks that we do have a very low millage, one of the lower ones in the state. We're very fortunate that we have a very strong tax digest. We also have an economy that has been, been done fairly well in the last two years, particularly out of, off of tourism. So it's just important to kind of keep that information in front of people. It does offset our property taxes when we often do have a SPOS.
And I, I believe that right now, we are one of only five counties in the state that's not collecting SPOS. And in our economy, that, that makes no sense.
And Tamara, I think another important point, too, at our work session there at Eppure, is we talked about pay compression and pay compensation. Eppure, is we talk about pay compression and pay compensation. Then that's a substantial number that, you know, is going to affect the revenues and the ability, if you don't have a SPOS, of our capital budget, right? Said it would really suppress funds available in coming years.
That was great. If we're going to move forward with the pay compression, it's very important that we work to get this SPOS in place if we're going to continue to keep the capital projects and upgrades going in the county.
And I believe it's important, too, that as we look at protecting SPOS revenues, we're looking at several other income streams that are new to us, like internet, sales tax, what we're receiving on short-term rentals, all those things add into the revenues for the county. So our citizenry is certainly aware of that, we need to look at that, we need to look at our undesignated funds, how much of those undesignated funds we might want to use to seed some of these projects that might be on the SPOS so that we're acting responsible. Look at the overall millage, see if there's not a way that we can reduce the millage rate while we're accomplishing these things to show Glen County that we are being physically responsible with the revenue, so we're so blessed to, well, generate.
Yeah, we cut the millage last year, 0.25 mills as a net, and that's something to remember. I mean, we did make a cut, and we're just very fortunate this time to be in a very good position as a county. There's no guarantee that continues on. I mean, I think anybody that thinks that we're going to continue at this rate is, historically, it just doesn't, doesn't work out that way.
Runs in cycles.
Runs in cycles, so we got to be careful as we talk about millage and where we cut and want to cut, but also understand that these levels are not always going to be, we're not always going to be at these levels. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
A couple more thoughts on SPOS. Another couple partners that will oftentimes, that you'll include in the list is EDA, last time had a couple projects, well, earlier this year, and then one that did not pass, as well as the Airport Commission. So those are some other, you know, given the Airport Commission is a county entity, is another partner of y'all's that will oftentimes ask y'all to include some projects on there as well as the EDA. And then, before I forget, so with SPOS, it's important that, you know, commissioners and counties can educate on SPOS. And this is kind of education versus promotion. County funds can't be used to promote the SPOS. So for instance, we can't have brochures or emails or mailers, or stat norstiken staffs tell people how they should vote on that SPOS. They can, you can spend money and staff time and resources to educate the public about the SPOS, saying, here's the projects, here's the estimates, and of course, commissioners themselves, you spend your own time, money, energy, saying how you think a SPOS should go and we vote on that's okay, as long as no county resources or time or staff are being used to do that. But that question comes up, you'll hear about that, I'm sure, as this starts to gear up about the cans and cans as far as education versus SPOS. If there are any questions about whether or not anything constitutes one or the other, certainly let me know, we can get you an answer on that, but just be mindful of that.
A town hall meeting would be county-sponsored, county-funded, and so we need to be careful-
That's right.
How to frame our conversation.
That's right. I've already had one town hall meeting, and the chairman and Walter were there, the two large commissioners, and one, I think, we didn't overstep our boundaries, we basically said we're wanting to introduce a SPOS this year, and we want to know what y'all want in a SPOS. That was basically the question. We didn't act like we weren't pushing it, we were just introducing it. And we were asking them to get involved as far as, what do y'all want in a SPOS out here in District One or in this area? And getting input from them and getting them on board with it. And maybe we were selling it in a way, but we were also just informing them.
You didn't tell us we don't pass a SPOS, we're going to raise your property debt.
Didn't say anything like that. And didn't tell them, and we didn't tell them that we were for it or against it, we just were introducing it.
And same things, you know, that this is what your SPOS will do, here are the projects, here's what the needs are. Education is fine. It's when, it's when staff or brochures or, you know, using county funds are saying, you should vote for this, and you know, you should vote for this and showing a preference to, because you're talking about a ballot initiative at that point, and that applies to really all ballot initiatives, not just SPOS, but it just happens that SPOS is the most common, that you just can't spend resources telling a voter how to vote on a referendum. But educate them as far as what it does, here's, you know, what projects are you interested in, we'd like to hear from you, that's okay.
This is, this may be a lame question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Can Sammy Tosterson, not Commissioner Tosterson, but Sammy Tosterson, can he push, can he endorse this, well, not endorse it, but promote it?
You personally?
Personally.
On your own time? No county resources? Yes. As commissioners, you know, you don't lose your right as individuals. Again, I would suggest staying away from, you know, public meetings, you know, county-sponsored meetings, but on your personal time, with your own personal resources, you know, meetings of, you know, that's, that's okay.
What about radio shows?
That's okay.
Rotary?
Rotary. That's okay. As long as, you know, I think as long as really staff is not, you know, assisting you with, that presentation hasn't helped develop that, but, you know, you personally, your individual capacity, you haven't lost that, you know, that identity, even though you are an elected official, are not prohibited from, on your own, on time, on money, radio shows, if you went to, you know, a rotary or something like that, saying this is what your personal belief is.
You spoke in a rotary meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, I think as long as you stay away from, you know, saying that, you know, on behalf of Glen County or the Board of Commissioners, but this is your personal, you know, individual belief, you're not prohibited from, because you're not spending county money on that.
I mean, that's what I got out of it, as long as it's not county-sponsored.
Not county-sponsored, you're not using county, you know, assistance to help you prepare for that. That's right, that's right. But on your personal time, if you've been doing that, and, you know, that doesn't soften you from saying this is your, this is, you know, your personal belief, your personal preference.
So are these town halls county-sponsored?
Yes. I mean, your staff is there, staff's helping them, there may be a cost associated with running the facility. I'd say that would be a county-sponsored event. In that context-
We didn't pay any rent on the one out there.
No, and, you know, I asked, I asked members of staff to attend, I didn't require them to attend or anything like that, they just came, you know, at my request.
And what I'm hearing is that, you know, there wasn't any, you know, push to say, this is, you should vote for this or not vote for this, and you're just, you're just asking for, I haven't heard, yeah, just input on-
You don't have formal motion of the SPOS, so they're not under that boundary.
That's a good point. I think you should be careful, but I haven't heard anything as far as that town hall that would have really pushed her over the edge, that, you know, there was a, you were telling your constituents or constituents, you know, how to vote for this, but, you know, you can have a town hall and say, here's the projects, what projects would you like to see on there?
That's what we do.
And as long as you're not telling the voters, you should vote for this, and if you get your project, you should vote for it, you're saying, we're, I mean, obviously the board is passing a, you know, the resolution to move it forward because I think collectively, you know, it's perceived as something that you want to move forward with. And from there, again, as long as you're saying, we're going to educate you on the project list, we're going to have one, here's, here's the numbers, here's the projects, you know, you're not crossing that line as long as you're not telling that constituent, you know, you should vote for this. You're not trying to influence that voter to vote for something, as opposed to having a town hall, which I think town halls are great. I think, you know, the more town halls you have to say, here's the, here's the information you need to make an educated vote on this, here you have it, any questions as to what this project is? I think town halls are great.
All right. Anything else, gentlemen? If not, we'll move to the SPOS 2016 project update. Ms. Thompson?
Yes, today I'll be also via texting giving Mr. Austin's update. Thank you all, Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. This is our most recent update on our active project list. And I have the clicker, so I can't just speak to the air. All right, this is our L-MIG road repaving. Please pardon me, I'm getting the update from the most recent update. L-MIG 22 should be out for bid in February, March, and as you can see, everything else is underway or complete. And y'all stop me if y'all have any questions along the way, please. Canal Road, Spur to 25, we have finished all but two right-of-way pieces, the two right-of-way we are working on. One, the two attorneys are talking, coming to an agreement. The third one, we had to do a very minor change order to allow, to design in a commercial driveway for that property owner, and those are moving forward. And the commercial piece that we were working on, that owner did accept us, our acceptance of their counteroffer, they signed the purchase agreement this week, and we are going to schedule a closing on that one. Yes, sir.
Question, and it may be for Dave. Those acquisitions, how long have those processes been underway?
It depends on each project. Canal Road is one that the Community Development Department has been working on since the beginning. The right-of-way acquisitions themselves-
Beginning of-
Since the beginning of SPOS 2016. So the right-of-way itself has only been in negotiation about a year and a half. We couldn't finalize the right-of-way until a design was made, and that design took several iterations. So this is a project that has been, been steadily worked on since 2016, and we are now at the point that we're down to two acquisitions, and we'll be ready, the designs are done, and we'll be ready to hit the road. And we've gotten our environmental permit, too, because we had some-
People complain about the delay, but I just wanted to elaborate that delays, especially on road projects and acquiring land or expansion or widening or a long-term process.
Yes, sir. In the way for 2016, in our Community Development Department, we have both our right-of-way coordinator and our acquisition agent that works for us on contract. So we took a lot of the projects that had a little more extensive right-of-way acquisition or more extensive permitting, so that we could be focused on those longer-term projects, and Public Works could really focus on things they could design in-house where we already had the right-of-way, and then they got one bear of a project with the Altama Connector. But we've been steady moving on them, and I can't promise it by this Thursday, but we're working with the Attorney's Office on an updated list of closing dates, and we are rapidly coming to the end of right-of-way acquisition for all of our projects. Dungeon Nest Drive, you all will be, this is the one that the right-of-way got out from underneath us, and then GDOT recommended a different solution that we would install completely within their right-of-way, so we would not need right-of-way. Staff has provided comment. County engineer Paul Andrews will now be sending that email to you this week, showing that design, seeing if you have any feedback. We're going to ask y'all within the next two to three weeks to give us feedback. If we don't hear any, it will remind you, I know y'all have more than a, more than a few emails y'all get every day, but we'll make sure we check in, and then we'll get that designed and ready to go. And again, assuming that is sufficient for y'all, we will not need any private right-of-way. Pinnacle Road paving, it's progressing, they finished the culverts this month, the box culvert will be worked on in February, and they're continuing to haul fill in for this project.
We are on that project, I think they're getting that, a lot of that field from Andrews and Allen.
I think so, yes, sir.
And we were having a dust issue, I know, talked to Mike Stewart about it, about keeping that really-
Hose down?
Hose down.
Okay.
To make sure that we're not creating-
Okay. I'll just follow up with Dave and Mike, just to make sure hose down right, okay? The Spur in Altama, this one is the one that was tough with right-of-way. Dave and Will Worley did work through that, you awarded the bid last year. Pre-con was conducted, we're awaiting the pre-cast concrete products, so that before that time starts for the contractor, and so as soon as we receive, as soon as the contractor receives those pre-cast products, they'll start. So knock on wood, next, next meeting, this will be a in-progress. Harry Driggers, this is the sidewalk, that current status, it is under construction, and we, I believe we had a delay with Georgia Power on relocating those poles. I'm sorry, I'm having to look in a few places for my updates. Yes, we are still, Georgia Power has not relocated those yet, and so we're just having to wait on them.
We need to, does, do we as a county need to contact?
I will confirm with Paul this week, we may need to go a little higher up the pole to get that date, to get that work completed, yes, sir.
Let's don't forget that, I mean, I think-
We've talked about it before, yes, sir.
If we need a letter from the county attorney, the county manager, we need to call somebody ourselves?
Yes, sir, and I-
I'm sure Georgia Power doesn't want to be the holdup of this.
I agree with you, and I think, I'm not sure that we've called our local community liaison yet, so that may actually need to be our first step.
Have a talk to Allen.
Yes, sir.
We haven't talked to him?
I don't know, I'm not going to tell you either way, I just, that may actually be the first step.
Take you to lunch, David.
This is the south one that are through grants. You awarded this contract to Ty Swindell in December, and we are waiting to get the final paperwork from GDOT because this is a grant, and he should get a field start date within the next six weeks. Frederica Road sidewalks, the progress right now is south of Sea Island Road. College Park, this is the one that's been on hold, and let me see if Tamara, not Tamara, if Monica did submit it. My understanding, and Tamara may know better than me, I think this one was targeted to already be submitted.
The grant.
The grant. So the grant application has been submitted, this is for complete construction of all four phases of this, we are now just awaiting the notification from DCA.
We anticipate to get that when, July, August?
I think June is what they were saying, but I'll confirm that with-
The total grant for that is what, another $4 million?
12 million.
12 million? Well, that would be great.
Yes, sir. As, as it was being designed, just because of the amount of issues and challenges in that neighborhood, the number kept going up. So we were phasing it to be able to hopefully fund it in pieces, but DCA has given us direction and feedback on our grant application from the Disaster Recovery Funds to have all phases completed with this project.
That's pretty hard for that to come through.
Yes, sir. And Tamara, if you don't mind helping me remember to ask Monica when we expect that Chapel Crossing, this is one, Mr. Stewart, when he first got here and asked us how he could help us, we asked him to move this one up the chain, he did start with the Fletzey staff that we were talking to. If you remember, every time we get feedback on a design, before we can get the MOU signed, there tends to be staff turnover at Fletzey, and then we kind of start over from scratch. So about four or five months before Mr. Stewart joined us, we started with a new set of employees that gave us good feedback, we just need the MOU actually executed. So I think I'll need to get with Mr. Stewart and move that up another-
I've had no response on that.
Okay.
My email communication was-
Who is going to benefit the most from this range of water?
It might be up for debate who would, both of us would, they, our water does go across their property. There are some challenges to the property that we are solving through this design. So I think you could very easily say it's either both win, or they win a little more than us, or benefit more, a little more than us. The most recent suggestions, they asked if our Public Works Department would maintain those drainage structures- those drainage structures on Fletzy. Dave Austin said we already do maintain some, and so he said we had the equipment and staff that we could maintain that, which that helps us, because the cleaner, we keep that drainage system, the less it backs up off of Fletzy property into county ditches. So we've told them we're willing to do what the last few things they wanted us to, it's just now how to get it to the person that'll actually execute it for us, so...
So perhaps we'll call Buddy Carter?
That's what I was thinking, is see if we can get the federal round.
Yeah, and, you know, just, it's time for them to move off the center. They've been holding this project up for a year, and, I mean, it helps everybody, so why in the world is there so much resistance to getting this little segment done?
Yes, sir. I'll get with Mr. Stewart this week or next week to get that moved up the line.
You know, when we first went out there, Unified Command, they have a big blatter dam around one of the buildings, because during Irma, I think it was, it flooded the whole first floor of that building. So it, in my thought, I think it's more important to them than us. But I don't know what our side is.
They stalled us unreasonably. So I think the chairman called Buddy Carter.
Well, why didn't we talk to the entire congressional, federal congressional delegate?
Yes, sir. And I will say, some of this was in the past, not recent past, but sometimes in the past, we'd send a letter and forget to mark our calendar or follow up with calls and emails. So I need to get a timeline of when we've communicated with them and when we've heard back, so that I can give that to Mr. Stewart to look at and make sure we've done all our due diligence as we move this up, because this has been happening even before I've worked here, and I don't want to tell you we've been, you know, reminding them three times a week if we haven't, so...
And we're not trying to chastise anybody, we're just trying to...
Ready to get it done.
Let's get them all...
Yes, sir. And we've done some things. I mean, they wanted us to do some additional security on those pipes to limit any risk of people getting onto the property from them and things like that. So we have been making some redesigns based on their feedback, and we'll follow up on that. The Golden Isles Parkway extension, you bid out, you awarded the design of this system down closer to the Dollar General, a little further down 99. That's underway right now, that design, and then we're going to bid out the larger area of that. Hornet Drive is the one where we just got the last piece in November, the last piece of right-of-way we needed, thanks to support from the Board of Commissioners. We've combined this with the Palm Street Drainage, and the attorneys, our attorneys have gotten the purchase agreement. They are working on scheduling the closing. We are close enough that we're going to be able to let this permit, let this bid within the next week or two, and so this will be to you into March, beginning of April. And those two projects are together. All right, if y'all have any questions, I've got some follow-up actions, and I'll get those to y'all by the end of this week.
Pam, I think it's one thing to note, as I was looking at last night, I mean, we've got some pretty big projects here at the end that we're trying to complete, you know, 5.4, 3.6, 4 million, million seven. So those are big projects that have taken a lot of time and effort. Also, since the 2016 SPOST passed, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've had two hurricanes come through. We have asked our staff to undertake doing the project list, and so the staff in this community's had a lot going on, as well as a pandemic. And what else has been going on lately? I don't know, it seems like there's a lot.
Other little storms.
Big store, big ship turnover. You know, when we go out and talk to folks about SPOST, one of the things I continue to hear is that should we have a dedicated management team or a management company? I think that's something we need to listen to our voters about and really think about as we go through this next SPOST, because when we're asking our staff to do what they do each and every day, and correct me, Mr. Stewart, I think you told me the other day, right now, across the different departments, there's like 80 different projects that are ongoing, that our staff is not only the 12 that are remaining here that they've been working on, but additional 68 projects they've been working, they're working on simultaneously, the design to bid all the way to construction and finalizing. It's a lot of work. And so I just encourage us to remember that as we go out and talk to our constituents, and yeah, rightly so. There's some frustration about timeline and how long it's taken. All we can do is say, this is where we are, and this is what we hope to do in the future to better handle that. And so there's some different things that we'll need to be looking at as we continue to proceed on this.
Thanks.
Ms. Thompson, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Anything else? Anyone want to spring forward?
I know that at the town hall meeting, and I may suggest this to the other commissioners that are going to hold town hall meetings, one of the things that were a problem with the passive 21 SPOST was unfinished projects. And we did a wonderful job trying to explain, you know, dealing with DNR, dealing with Army Corps of Engineers, dealing with DOT, and all the government agencies that we have to deal with. It's not just difficult for individuals to have to deal with it, but it is for our government to have to deal with it with other governments. Walter Commissioner Bravoski did a wonderful job with the Brunching News explaining that from that meeting that night, and it was put into the Brunching News. But I think explaining that at your town hall meetings may be somewhat important, because after the meeting, a lot of people say, oh, I didn't realize that y'all had to go through all those problems as well. I said, yes, and that slows down projects, and that's one of the main reasons why we weren't able to. We still have some projects on the books for 2016, and just explaining it to them made a big difference in their mind, and I think helps push our next SPOST a little forward.
I agree. All right. Anything else? All right, well, we're adjourned, gentlemen.